Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular school committee meeting this Wednesday, September 21st at 7:02 PM. Please note, we are live streaming on our YouTube channel and recording will be available on our YouTube channel afterwards. I would like to take a moment and ask, and I better do this myself, speak clearly into the microphone when you are asking a question or giving your reports to ensure that our viewers from home can follow along. I'll ask you now to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask that you remain standing after the pledge so that we may have a moment of silence for Dr. Jacqueline Forbes, Forbes BR's former superintendent who passed away last week. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to introduce our school committee members and administration in attendance this evening for a regular school committee meeting. On my left, I have Mr. Di Amorino, Mrs. Conrad La Barento, Mrs. Martelli. On my right, I have Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. King, Mr. Dolan, Mr. Marrera, and I am Lillian Holbrook, the chair. We also have in attendance this evening, Mr. Ryan Powers, Ms. Kathy Macedo, Mr. Michael Schantz, Mrs. Judy McDougall, and other members of the admin team. Also, I want to thank Margot Fortier from the Rainham Channel for being here this evening. Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session where we approved a letter to the school committee from Mr. Swenson requesting a temporary leave of absence for personal reason, for up to 60 business days for personal reasons. As a result, we will need to appoint an acting superintendent, and we have a couple of options. We can do a search through MASC or MASs, or appoint someone from within the district. So, do we have a discussion we would like to have?
Madam Chair, if I could, having gone through a superintendent search, and I believe you as a teacher did, and Mr. Fitzgibbons on his first run on school committee did as well, that is an extensive and exhausting process, and if this is a short term, then I think it would be financially, financially, that's the word I'm looking for, unprudent? It wouldn't be prudent, thank you. It wouldn't be prudent to spend the money to do a search for a temporary, a temporary position.
In that.
So, that's my own, my own two cents on that.
Mrs. King?
Within the district, if we were to appoint someone, who has the credentials currently?
The, we have four people right now who hold that license within the district for the superintendent, assistant superintendent's license, and those people are Holly Hargraves, Kathy Macedo, Paul Jovalos, and Ryan Powers.
Madam Chair, with that said, I'd like to do, as a form of emotion, a appointment of acting superintendent of Mr. Ryan Powers, who is probably most familiar with the day-to-day operations of the district.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Marrera, second by Mrs. Martelli, and this will be a roll call vote. Oh, discussion, sorry, sorry, discussion?
There are other suggestions, I just want to give the committee a chance to lay in on other suggestions.
I would, if I could, weigh in, as the budget, again, sorry, the budget subcommittee chair, you can't have Kathy. Not going to happen. We go into budget season, starting October 1st, and no, you can't have her, sorry Kathy. Nope, not giving her up.
Mrs. Holbrook, just knowing that we were walking into this tonight, I don't know if you were able, or Mr. Maraya, were able to have any of the conversations with any of those four individuals, even around their willingness, because it is a big job to take on, and even their willingness to want to take that job on?
I did. One of the committee members did ask me to ask Mrs. Macedo, and I did ask Mrs. Macedo, and she was, no. No, thank you.
Perfect answer.
And was there a conversation with any of the others?
I did not have a conversation with any of the others.
And like Mr. Dolan said, to do a public search would take kind, a little bit of time, time. We have to have a time.
Right, right.
Could I amplify on that? To even start a public search would take more than 30 days.
Thirty days.
And, you know, it just, it just wouldn't be in our best interest at this point in time, so I, I have no interest in going down a search route at all.
And as far as the other candidates are concerned, we would be taking, you know, looking at that, if that is something that people would like to pursue more, we can absolutely ask the other two people that have a license as well.
And if we were, sorry.
Sorry, no, go ahead.
If we were to approve Mr. Powers, what would then the process be with Mr. Powers? Because there doesn't seem like there's been a conversation, a formal conversation at this point with Mr. Powers?
Is whether he would accept it or not?
Yes.
In asking, in speaking to him, he would accept that position?
And then there would be a negotiation or whatever?
So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mrs. Holbrook.
Yes.
You said you didn't speak to the other?
I'm sorry, yes, I did say that.
So, that's a little bit confusing.
Yes, it was confusing. I did speak to Mr. Powers, I apologize for that. I did not speak to Mrs. Hargraves or Mr. Jovalos.
Thank you.
And my concern, if I could, Madam Chair, and I'm sure Mrs. Hargraves and Mr. Jovalos are completely capable of filling the role, we would be pulling a school principal out of the building that has a half-time assistant principal and our director of student services, who oversees our entire special education program. So, I'm a little concerned with either of those options. Again, completely confident they could do the job, I just, I'm worried that we are robbing Peter to pay Paul, if you would.
Mrs. King?
To clarify, would this acting position run concurrently with Mr. Swenson's leave?
Mm-hmm.
So, that would, if he came back at some point, he would go back into his position?
Correct.
If he did not, then what happens?
If he did not come back?
If it continues to extend?
We would have to come back as a committee and vote an extended leave, and also, we would have to vote, if I'm correct, Mr. Emerson, Mr. Ask?
If the question is, would you have, you'd have to vote to extend Mr. Swenson's request if he were to extend it, and that would also include then also extending the appointment of the acting, so it would be in two more votes.
So, this wouldn't just put the acting in indefinitely, we would have to do something eventually, if Mr. Swenson doesn't return?
If he does not return at all, that's a whole different story.
And vice versa, if, if he returns, then everything goes to status quo empty.
Correct.
And Mrs. Holbrook?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Sorry.
Sorry. With this also, then if we decided to appoint, if we approved Mr. Powers as acting, what does that do, again, as Mr. Dolan, another, around the other two positions of pulling Robert and Paul to pay, pardon, Peter to pay Paul, what would that then do for that assistant superintendent position?
We would have to backfill that position?
So, we have the option to backfill?
We do.
And that would then be up to Mr. Powers, or whoever was acting superintendent, to backfill that, that assistant superintendent position?
Correct, that is not in our purview as a school committee. Any other questions? Okay, so, we have a motion by Mr. Marrera to appoint Mr. Powers to the position of acting superintendent during the absence of Mr. Swenson, and if I could add to that, subject to negotiations to compensate him for his extra work. And we have a second by Mrs. Martelli. So, this will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Conrad La Barento?
Aye.
Mr. Di Amorino?
Aye.
Mr. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Martelli?
Aye.
Mr. Marrera?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Powers, for taking on this role. I truly believe that your experience and familiarity of the district is well-suited and to step right into this position at this time. At this time, I would also like to refer this to the negotiations team for further action.
So, moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons and a second by Mr. Marrera, and is this roll call?
No.
No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. So, I believe our next step is to possibly backfill Mr. Powers' position as the acting, I mean, as the, as assistant superintendent, and so, Mr. Powers, if you have any ideas, would you please let me know as soon as possible so that this can also be referred to budget subcommittee?
Absolutely, I will keep you informed.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda are community emails and correspondences, and each month I will continue to report on emails and correspondences from members of each of the, of the school community. This month, the school committee received emails ranging in topic to include an email regarding a 504 plan, which was forwarded to Mr. Jovalos and Mr. Swenson, an email with an attached article entitled, "Young Adults Are Using Marijuana and Hallucinants at the Highest Rates on Record," that was asked to be passed on to the school committee members, which was. Two emails were received regarding bus, busing issues that were passed along to the chair of the transportation subcommittee. I also received a letter from the Attorney General's office notifying the committee that the complaint from Ms. Mainville regarding an open meeting law violation filed on June 6th, 2022, has been closed with no findings. An email was sent expressing gratitude from the first grade team at the Mitchell School. I am also in receipt of two emails from parents concerned with the condition of the Bridgewater Middle School. An email was received inquiring the location of school committee agendas on the website. I also received an email asking for clarification on an agenda item, and an email was received advocating for an acting superintendent. And this concludes correspondences and recognition. Next on the agenda is public comment, and the school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak, ensure compliance with open meeting law and any other legal obligations, and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with the speaker or with one another in deliberation on comments as they are presented during comment periods. At its discretion, the committee may schedule issues raised by a speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. If you would like a personal response, please email the committee or Mr. Powers directly following the meeting. That's going to take a while. The chair will now open up public comment for a period of 12 minutes per policy BEDH and would ask anyone who wishes to speak to please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and respectfully ask that you please limit comments to three minutes. When your three minutes are up and you are, you still have not finished, I will ask that you submit your thoughts or script to our recording secretary, Mrs. McDougall, and she will distribute it to the committee for our review. So, at this time, I will open public comment at, what time is that?
7:18.
7:18, thank you.
No glasses.
Anyone that would like to speak to the committee, please approach. No one? Okay, then I will close public comment at?
7:18.
7:18, okay. Next on our agenda, I will entertain a motion to table the approval of the warrants dated August 25th, 2022, and September 8th, 2022, until our October meeting.
So, moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Marrera, second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, eight in favor, none opposed, motion passes. Motion to approve minutes dated August 24th, 2022.
So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons, second by Mrs. King. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, eight in favor, zero opposed. Next on our agenda, we have educational reports and the 2022-2023 school opening. First, we have a report from the Coordinator of Family and Student Support, Ms. Moore.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Can anybody hear me?
Maybe, all right. Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the school committee. So, I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself, as I'm still relatively new to the district, but am still just as happy and blessed to be a part of it. My name is Sarah Moore, and I'm the Coordinator of Family and Student Supports for the district. Under the umbrella of a title that I have, I just want to explain, I am the district's SOA, or Supervisor of Attendance, as we're called across the state, the district's McKinny Vinto, or homeless liaison for any of our students and families struggling with housing needs. I'm also the district's DCF contact person for any student currently in or coming into or being placed in our towns and whom DCF reaches out to when something happens to any of our current students, as well as the district's residency officer when needed. The summer and beginning of the school year was spent reaching out to and staying connected with all of our current families designated as McKinny Vinto or currently involved in different care situations, foster, custody, et cetera, as their needs and situations don't end just because the school year does, and we wanted to help them make a seamless transition back to the school year. I continue to work with Amanda at the Wandering Hearts Foundation to support those students and families with school supplies, backpacks, and back-to-school clothes for the new school year. She has also graciously created and donated period packs for girls who may need supplies that I've been bringing over to our middle schools, as well as the Williams Intermediate School. I am in the process of working on the family resources part of the webpage to be used as a centralized location for resources that are district-wide, or that each school will have their own page for as well. Things like that include school supply list, handbooks, policies, and also serve as a hub to direct them to all of the places if they're reaching out for something specific. They can kind of go to the family resources page, and then we can forward them to wherever they can get the best solution for their questions asked. I'm also working on a few different forms for the site, like creating a frequently asked questions doc, so that we can provide links and resources for specific things that have already been asked of us, a form similar to a "still can't find what you're looking for" concept, so that we can direct the people or their questions to the right department or people to best answer their questions, as well as a family needs form, so that staff and administration, as well as families themselves, can fill out the referral form to get a student or family help, or at least get in touch with the right department to kind of refer them for outside resources or referrals if needed. And lastly, my office is actually located in the registration office with Meg, Sue, and Ellen, which makes it pretty seamless for wraparound services, and sort of a one-stop shopping for any families that enroll. I have to give credit to these ladies, because it has been a little, little busy this summer with all of our registrations and families coming in person to provide their documents and ask for support. Anytime somebody calls in with a question or comes into the registration in person, that team is incredibly helpful and able to identify those families and who they should reach out to, or bring them right to me if it's something that I can help them with in the moment. I also happen to speak Portuguese, so being located in that space with registration data and transportation has been really helpful, I think, for these ladies, as well as the different departments, to help them with any documents that need to be read or explained. I know it's only one language, but hopefully, it's been helpful while trying to navigate some of those challenges. I know Meg and I are also working on a plugin for the internet and computer to assist with translating some of our Power School options, but I've also been able to manually translate our registration forms in the form of, in Power School into a Google Doc for families to fill out in real time, and then I go into Power School to do the application for them, which saves time for everybody and able to kind of support them with any questions that they have, like on spot or in the moment, rather than having them do it online and not know who to access for those questions and those documents, and I'm able to give the schools a heads up for any of those families that are coming in and relay the message and the timeline for those families and next steps as they happen, or I can get the information and give that back to the families. Really just trying to eliminate some of those barriers in registration, at least for some of the families that I can, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so for them.
Thank you. Does anyone from the committee have any questions or comments for Ms. Moore? Okay, thank you so much for supporting our families, Ms. Moore, and speaking for myself, I have learned a lot of what you do and your position, and I'm thrilled that you're supporting our students and families. Thank you. Next, we will hear from our Power School Administrator, Ms. Meg Cohen.
Hi. My name is Meg Cohen. Like I said, I'm the database manager for the school district and also oversee Power School, as Power School Administrator. Good evening, Madam Chair, and school committee members, and Mr. Powers, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight and provide an update on Power School and our district website. Seems so far. You know, my voice carries. So, first off, with Power School, central registration, registered approximately 700 students for the 22-23 school year in grades K through 12. A special thank you to Susan Dooley, Administrative Assistant to Central Registration, Ellen George, Transportation Coordinator, for their collaborative effort they provided in gathering the required documents, meeting with families, and processing the new students' registrations in a timely manner. They put in some very long days to make that happen, so a big thank you to them. I couldn't do it without you. I really couldn't even do it, so, that's no lie. Also, to the health offices for their part in the process, for processing the immunizations. Kudos to the nurses and the health aides. Again, we couldn't do it without you, because without those being processed, the students could not start school, so thank you to them. And last but not least, Sarah Moore, you described very well what you did. It's almost funny that you've only been here a year, because you feel like you've always been in our office, so we appreciate you greatly. As coordinator of Family and Student Supports, you've provided a real special contribution to assist families who need it in many ways, and you described many of those, so you get a big thank you. As always, the start of school is a very busy time of year, and we have received many, many Power School Help support tickets from parents and guardians, requesting assistance with accessing their Power School portal accounts, and my team is working on completing those and responding to those tickets. But we remind parents that are out there, if they are having problems accessing their Power School portal, to submit a help ticket via our district website, and we will resolve your issue. Also, for families, the Power School portal provides great access to assignments, attendance, and at the end of grade reporting periods, access to that traditional-looking report card. So, that was something that, over the last couple of years, the parents have really asked for, having, you know, like, you know, the report card continued to that look, you know, where everything's gone so computerized, just looking at that quick lookup screen sometimes wasn't enough for families, they, like, the paper won't, so they can log into their portal and print that out, so that's nice. Now, we move on to the website. So, in April 2022, we unveiled the new district website with a new jazzy look, new navigation system, and it's been very well-received. Since then, we have had a chance to live with the site and discover the need for some design tweaks, which we'll be unveiling in the next couple of weeks, just to, like, excite you about it. A couple of things were kind of redundancy in some pages, cleaning, taking away those so you didn't have to look so many places, also fine-tuning our menus, and, and kind of changing some of our quick links. But other than that, people have been really excited with the page, and now it has a real pretty look. We're all about pretty, right? As you know, we have some new faces in our main office, which has resulted in a change in the building-based website update team. Now that the dust has settled from the hustle and bustle of the start of school, I will be able to get that team together, and we can meet and have a training on how to update their page, and they'll assist in keeping their school page alive, which means up to date with current information of what's happening in the school at the current time. And it's been a very busy start of the school year, so it was hard to jump on them with that the first day and first week they started, so in the next couple of weeks, we'll gather together and have that training with them. The good thing about this site that we picked is that it's very, it's very user-friendly, so I look forward to having that time with them, okay? And that's all. Thank you for listening.
Does anyone from the school committee have any questions? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you for the report, Mrs. Cohen. I heard 700 registered students, is that new, or is that total?
That's total, that's new. That's the total new students that have entered our district, that includes our kindergarten, which of course we expect.
No, no, I'm trying to understand, do we have, like, close to 5,000 people who use Power School?
We have, we have 5,600 students.
Okay, that, yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, almost everyone's on it.
Right, right, I meant.
That was, that was my point, thank you.
When I said 700, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, I meant new students that are entering the district.
Got it. That's what I assumed, but I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Martelli?
It was along the same lines. And as far as kindergarten, did you see an increase? I know you talked about it at the end of the school year, but over the summer, is it more or less than last year?
You know, that's funny, let me go back to that page. You know, in kindergarten, right now at Mitchell, we have 262, and that's a few less than we've had other years, but it's, it's funny, like, enrollment, and I'll come back in November about enrollment, it's like a, you know, it's like a wave, is the best way to describe it, so, right now, but you'll see that number go up in the next few weeks. And we're still registering students now, so every day, like five every day.
And as Meg will attest, October 1st is our, is a very important day in the district. That's our reporting number to the state for funding for our budgets in future years. So, it's, that date, to Mrs. Martelli's point, is important for us to have those numbers at that point. Meg said she's still getting people to register, which is great, you know, the more people, the more, frankly, funding aid we get, so.
Yes, Mr. Marrera?
Ms. Cohen, I do have one question. I know over the last few years, on both sides of the district, there's been a lot of homes being built. Have we not reached that enrollment influx yet? Is it, or have we already passed that and those? Is it, or have we already passed that and those students are already within our district? I guess an easier way to rephrase it, have we seen the, an influx bump already, and now we're going back down, or we have not seen it yet? Because I know the houses were sold, and a lot of people are paying very expensive mortgages. I just don't know if there are school-age kids yet that just haven't gone, come into our school system yet, or if they already have hit our bump.
Yeah. In K to 4, of course, we have seen that, those bumps in numbers, and when I come back in November, I'll add this year's numbers to that grid spreadsheet I've made previously to show you the difference from year to year. But yeah, yes, we have seen that bump, and it seems like there are always, there's always building, so we're always going to get new people.
Madam Chair, if I could, one more point to, to the kindergarten numbers specifically. And I actually mentioned, I'll mention this in my budget subcommittee report, kindergarten, as most folks know, is not a state mandate, so we get a lot of first-grade newbies, if you will, because kindergarten isn't mandated at the state level. So I think we, when people only look at kindergarten, we sort of have a false sense of reality, frankly, because kindergarten's not required, so.
And a lot of times, speaking as a first-grade teacher, from experience, that those children, a lot of the kindergarten children went to a private school and then enter or enroll in the public school for first grade.
So. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Cohen, for your report. We look forward to your report in the future.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda, we have our IT Manager, Mr. Shantz.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Mr. Powers. The IT Department has been very busy since the opening of school. Since school started, we've completed 415 work order requests. This number does not include the many pass order resets, questions in the hallways, or email correspondence. I want to thank our IT techs, Tom O'Keahy, Chris Coon, Walter Healy, and Matt Tucker for their hard work this last month and over summer. Our one-to-one program is off to a great start. Before the start of school, we held seven Chromebook Distribution Days. The first week of school, we accommodated any student that missed those days. In total, we have distributed 2,878 Chromebooks to students in grades 5 through 12. This means that 304 students have opted out and decided to use their own device. So a little over nine, around nine and a half percent students have opted out. We do have 300 Chromebooks in inventory, so if any of those students that have opted out decides they want a district Chromebook, they should reach out to their principal or myself. I want to share some ongoing and completed projects in the district. Before school started, 57 75-inch touch-view interactive displays were installed at the Bridgewater Middle School. This is a huge improvement over the E-instruction boards that were previously, previously installed. So far, we've had great feedback from the teachers. We are in the process of upgrading the network infrastructure and Wi-Fi access points at the La Liberty Elementary School. This project is close to completion and will improve connectivity in that building. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Madam Chair, I have one.
Mr. Marrow?
Mr. Shantz, I know I asked this question, I think, maybe two months ago. I just wanted to ask again because I received the comment as we approached the beginning of school. Those students that are opting out and using their own personal Chromebooks, they are still eligible to receive IT services if they run into a jam with their, with their own device?
Yes, we're willing to help them.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shantz.
Thank you.
Thanks for such a smooth transition with that one-to-one tech, technology. I appreciate that. Okay, next we have Transportation Update, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. I would like to give you a brief update on transportation. As you know, we contract with Lucini Bus Lines to provide all of our bus and van transportation to students who are eligible. We do realize that the beginning of every school year, there are some transportation hiccups, and certainly this year is no different. We did experience a few issues over the first few days of school, specifically related to staffing. Unfortunately, Lucini Bus Lines is no different than any other school system or industry across the Commonwealth, and they are experiencing, at the time, shortage in drivers and monitors for both buses and vans. Mr. Lucini was responsive to our outreach and, as we expressed our concerns, that certainly those delays in transportation and any of the issues that we saw were not acceptable, and he certainly agreed. He did work to add additional staff, and he also worked to reach out to other vendors to also provide assistance to Lucini Bus Lines. We do feel as though, for the most part, any issues that we did see over those first few days have been cleared up. We certainly know that as the bus routes and the van routes run, students are sometimes reassigned just to try to make those routes more efficient. As you know, those routes are developed on, on the computer with Ms. George and Ms. Howard, and everything looks great on paper, but until those routes actually run, we don't 100% know for sure how it's going to play out. So again, I can't thank Ms. George, one, for sometimes bearing the brunt of, of these issues, but she does it with professionalism and grace and always, always on the phone. Even I was down there today working with Ms. Cohen, and I think she spent the entire 45 minutes on the phone talking about transportation. So even to this day, we still are working some of those kinks out, but for the most part, we do feel as though our bus and van routes have improved. Just to give you, you know, an understanding of, you know, the undertaking, you know, being close, being the, you know, one of the largest regional school districts in the Commonwealth. At our peak, we have over 50 vehicles on the road between buses and vans. That is our last two tiers, between Tier 2 and Tier 3. We have a little bit less, obviously, on Tier 1, because that's the high school run, so we roughly run 20 buses and then the vans, and then on Tier 2 and Tier 3, we have 36 buses plus the vans. So well over, well over 50 pieces of, of transportation out on the road, so you can see quite the undertaking. But again, we're confident and working with Lucini on a daily basis that most of the issues that we've seen thus far have been resolved or are in the process of being resolved.
Are there any questions for Mr. Powers? Yes, Mr. Tumaramino?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
When the bus stops are assigned, is that something through the program that Ms. George uses, or is it through Lucini?
So we and Lucini both have access to that program, so really working together. It's the Versitran system in terms of calculating the mileage. The bus stops, for the most part, are rolled over year to year. Some things that we look at, obviously, is enrollment, students at those bus stops, have they graduated? You know, are they no longer there? So if students are no longer there, we're obviously not going to put a bus stop. So, you know, we do, Ms. George and Ms. Howard and Lucini do review those bus stops to see how many students are there. And, you know, you could be looking at, say, Longer Street, and maybe the student population has moved down towards one end of the street versus they were down the other end the year before. So we will make adjustments in those bus stops as well on a yearly basis, depending on how that goes. But yes, the district and Lucini both have access to that, that computer.
And just to follow up, and the reason I'm bringing this up is based off a correspondence that we received, does it, do you take into account the fact that a bus stop may, may be on the property of somebody that doesn't qualify for school busing? Since, you know, the paid-er-ride program was eliminated, which is a hot-button issue, you know, just to make sure that, you know, we don't want to rub it in these individuals' faces?
Absolutely. And unfortunately, in the past, and I believe even this year, that may have happened. It, it does unfortunately happen in some cases, and we do try to work with our family, explain the situation. If possible, we do try to make some adjustments. We certainly understand the message that sends, that you're not eligible, but, yep, we're going to put the bus stop in your driveway. So, you know, trying to clean up that conflict, we do realize that, again, the predicament that does put us, the Lucini, and obviously the family in as well. But I know if we can move that, we have in the past tried to accommodate that change. Thank you.
Mrs. Tumaramino?
Mr. Powers, if families still have questions or concerns about transportation, should they be going to Mrs. George or to Lucini at this point?
I would say, really, depending on the situation. We obviously want things filtering through the districts where we're aware. You know, Lucini is, is fairly good at communicating with us. I guess we would just want to make sure that if something was communicated to them and it didn't get to us, that we would have no record. So I would encourage families, for the most part, sorry, Ms. George, but to continue to reach out to Ms. George, or at least, you know, CC her on the email if they're reaching out to Lucini, or just, again, giving us the heads up that they have contacted Lucini.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I know, Mr. Powers, that the buses have been a challenge, and I just want to thank you, Mr. Swenson and Mrs. George, for really being on top of this and communicating with Lucini on a daily basis to get this right. And as Mr. Powers stated, bus and van drivers and monitors are exceptionally difficult to find right now, so we truly do appreciate your patience as we continue to work through this. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Next on the agenda, we have administrative and school committee reports, and we will first hear from the Acting Superintendent, Mr. Powers.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. I did want to provide you an update on the opening of the new Mitchell, as well as provide you an update on Bridgewater Middle School. So as you know, we did open our brand-new building, the George Mitchell Elementary School, this fall. And for those who don't know, that building is currently housing pre-K through second grade students. That was a change from the previous year where we had K through 3. We were able to bring our preschool students back over from Rainham Middle School. Thank you to Ms. Charette and Mr. McKnight for hosting them the last few years, but we're excited to be back under one roof. And Mr. Clark has inherited the third grade up at the Williams, so thank you to Mr. Clark and, and Ms. Larkin and his team. We did have a public tour for the community on September 1st. It was very well attended. I know at one point, from your position inside, Ms. Holbrook, all the way to the large parking lot on the backside of the property, the line had stretched that way. So it, it was, a lot of families, a lot of the Mitchell families attended. We did have quite a few number of community members attend as well, and I so appreciated that because they obviously wanted to see where their tax dollars were going, and I can, you know, pleasantly report that not one walked out of there unhappy. They all felt as though it was money well spent, and certainly the Mitchell family also attended as well. So it was great to see them and have them tour the building. As you know, we also, on September 10th, held an official ribbon-cutting ceremony for members of the community and obviously the construction team, CHA, Bacon Construction, members of the Building Committee, town officials, and school officials as well. So another wonderful event to mark the milestone of opening this new building. However, there is still some work that needs to take place. This work is projected to take place throughout the fall. As you know, when we're talking about construction timelines, there's always some changes. So right now, we're looking at construction lasting, if everything goes well, through October, but certainly, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if I'm standing here at another meeting telling you that some of that work may go into November. Some of it could be weather-driven or supply chain unfortunately driven. But right now, on the exterior, some things that you'll notice if you're heading over there, landscaping is, is really shaping up. They've made such great strides over the last week in the landscaping, as well as the playgrounds. So if you're not familiar, there are four playgrounds over at the new Mitchell. There's two out in the backfield, one main one outside of the cafeteria, and then a preschool playground on the backside of the building. As of the other day, when we had our trailer meeting, three out of the four playgrounds were operational. They were just working to put the finishing touches on that fourth playground. I know they were hoping potentially by the end of this week to have that wrapped up so students could use it at the beginning of next week, but certainly, things could change. The permanent Mitchell School sign will be installed. That's quite the undertaking. They are bringing a crane in, not a large crane, but a smaller crane, but a crane nonetheless, to help install that. As you know, we moved over temporarily the Mitchell School sign that was at the Mitchell, then brought over to the Mitchell at the middle, and then we brought it back for the opening of school. But that new sign is in, and it will be installed, so we're excited to see that. Fingers crossed that takes place this week, but if not, certainly next week. And then traffic gates, some of the traffic gates have begun to be installed, but additional gates will be placed, and those traffic gates will really be located on the backside of the building and over by Wally Kruger Way to really try to prevent traffic from flowing around the building, especially during the school day, especially at recess time when the students are outside, because many of our students will be crossing that driveway to get out to the backfield for recess. So those gates will, again, hopefully be installed and operational relatively soon. On the inside, as you know, some of the work is still taking place. Some of it is, you know, aesthetic. Some of those rulining panels are being installed in, in different hallways. The main hallway going down the kindergarten wing all the way up to the second floor, preschool wing, there's some paneling going on downstairs in the caf as well. So that work is taking place after school and during the evening hours. We have a second shift crew coming in to, to perform that. Also, the gymnasium, we are currently using the gym, but there's still work that needs to be done in there. The bleachers need to be installed, the wall pads need to be mounted, as well as the scoreboard. Again, those are tentatively all on the docket for the next week or two, but fingers crossed that'll take place. And then some of our learning spaces do have movable dividers between them, so, you know, for instance, up in the maker space, between the maker space, one of the art rooms in our OTPT room and some of our other learning spaces, they have those sliding walls, dividers, that either allow the room to be expanded into a bigger space or, you know, create two smaller spaces. Again, those should be installed relatively soon. But I would just say, I mean, being over there every day for the first week of school and then being over there the last couple of weeks, every time I go over, there's more progress, and it really is shaping up, and it's, it's looking beautiful. So super excited. I know Mr. Bray is, you know, excited with all the progress as well, and Ms. Zachary is, is as well. One of the other things I did want to highlight, because one of our other buildings that really saw the most changes was Bridgewater Middle School. So the old, going back to the old Bridgewater, Rainham Regional High School, then the Bridgewater Middle School, Mitchell at the middle, and now back to Bridgewater Middle. Obviously, this, you know, building is one of our older buildings in the district. However, we did make significant investment over the last year to two, three years in that building, in anticipation for those middle school students to be returning. So as you know, as we've talked about the reconfiguration, the new Bridgewater Middle School is grades 6 through 8, and we have spent approximately $800,000, a little less than $800,000 in upgrades this past year, this past few years. Just to kind of give you a breakdown, as you know, I believe it was two years ago, we installed the new gym floor, new wall pads, and new bleachers for $165,400. We renovated the auditorium last year into the summer. That was roughly approximately $226,199, and that included new seating, lighting, and obviously painting the auditorium as well. They did refinish the stage and did some painting on the stage and the backdrop in addition to that. We did spend approximately $206,287 on new furniture for all of our learning spaces, so our classrooms all have new student desks, our science lab have new tables. So we really tried to make an investment so that when they would come back, they weren't sitting at desks that, you know, probably were there from the original high school. And then Mr. Shantz did touch upon this, but we also installed interactive touch panels like you see here, very similar to that. They are, depending on the space, either wall-mounted or potentially on a cart like this, but that was approximately $199,279 for all of our learning spaces. So, you know, we certainly realize there is still work to be done over there, and Mr. Kilgore and I have had those conversations, Mr. Kalif, Mr. Hines as well, but I think, you know, once you review that list and review the investment we've made, I think it's safe to say that, you know, it's pretty impressive in that we, we have tried to upgrade that facility as best as possible for our Bridgewater Middle School students and staff.
Madam Chair, if I may. Mr. Powers, on the Mitchell School, the continued work that's happening, can you just assure parents that any contractors that are working second shift are quarried through the district?
100%, yes. We are working with CHA to make sure that any contractor, any subcontractor that enters that building is going through the query process. CHA in Bacon have worked closely with us to provide us that information. CHA and Bacon have worked closely with us to provide us that information. Our human resources department is processing that. And we're even putting extra steps in as well. Obviously, majority of those contractors are all identifiable through their work uniforms. But in addition, you do know, we do have base students in that building, but we worked with Mr. Bealy to make sure that students are always supervised, even if it's simply going, you know, to the restroom, a room or two away, that there is a staff member always accompanying them. And really, Mr. Bray and Ms. Zachary have worked to make sure that wherever work is taking place, that students are, if possible, not in those areas after school. But yes, a hundred percent, we are making sure. There is some work that takes place during the day, exterior work. So there are contractors on site, they're not typically entering the building. Certainly, there could be issues with, you know, an immediate issue with plumbing, electrical that does require a contractor to enter the building during the day. But obviously, the supervisors from Bacon, CHA are all on site as well as school administration.
Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I must have misheard on last meeting or two because I thought we were told that no work would be going on during the school day. Yet there is work going on during the school day. Was that a change of plans or did I just miss here?
I can't speak a hundred percent to that, Mr. Fitzgibbons. I'm not sure what was said to you. But I do know exterior work, as far as I know, is always planned to happen during the school day in terms of landscaping, playground work.
I might have misheard that. My wife accuses me of all that. So, and my second question is, and I think you addressed it, but just to put an emphasis on it. I happened to drive through the other day just to take a look around, drive through the parking lot. And there was a backhoe out there working on a playground fence. But we're making sure, you know, we're keeping all the children away from that and there's safety protocols, et cetera. So there's no worries about kids being close to construction equipment where, you know, we don't want to have misfortune.
Yes, a hundred percent. And there are, you know, there have been days where the school administration has limited access to the playgrounds or to the fields because work is taking place. You know, even on, unfortunately, probably on a nice weather day, we've limited access. And I know even in the gym, we've limited access because there could be something going on as well. So we really are, you know, making every effort. And I have to, you know, compliment CHA and Bacon as well. They are very diligent about not putting themselves doing work around students. They're also very conscientious about that as well.
Could I go to BMS for a second?
Sure, nope.
On BMS, there's obviously a lot of concerns about the lockers and I hope that you and your team are going to be addressing that through Mr. Kalif and, you know, just assuring parents we get the locker situation under control to the best we can. So I'll just say that so I don't have to say it later on when I do my community liaison report. But secondly, you referenced that the Bridgewater Middle School is one of the older buildings in the district, which I believe it's probably the third oldest, right? In that the original piece was built in the early 60s. I think the Maryland would have been probably a little bit older. And it's definitely, the new addition, which was built in the early 70s, is definitely younger than both of them, Rainham School. So, I mean, it's not like it's ancient, is what I'm trying to say.
No, no, and it's a very well-built building, absolutely.
About $6 million of improvements, if we're talking about numbers, of what was put into it. There was about $6 million of infrastructure put in there back in the early 2000s when we built the new high school to upgrade all the facility, the plant, if you will, the heating, et cetera, et cetera. So you can correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't believe you are. And Ms. Holbrook, I'd be remiss if I didn't obviously thank school committee for supporting all those projects. Mr. Schantz for working on all those interactive panels. Ms. Macedo, I know she took on the bulk of ordering the furniture and making sure that was supported. And obviously, Mr. Kalif and Mr. Heinz for getting their, you know, list of needs and wants together for Ms. Macedo. And then certainly, Mr. Kilgore for coordinating a lot of this work that happened in terms of the auditorium and the gym. So it was a team effort, but I can't thank that team enough and obviously you as well as the committee.
Are you well set with your report, Mr. Powers?
I believe, that report, yes.
Okay. Okay. Then the DESI audit review update?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall, or it's certainly been some time, this past school year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education was on-site. It was February of 2022 and they conducted a district comprehensive review. That comprehensive review, as I stated, took place over a series of days in February. We were originally told that we may have a draft sometime in June. Mr. Joe Velos and I worked closely with our liaison from DESI and unfortunately, that draft was somewhat delayed. We did not receive a draft until August and we actually just received our final report on September 6th. As you may or may not recall, the focus of that review was to evaluate the district using DESI's six standards and 21 related indicators of effective school district policy and practice. And just to refresh your memory, those six standards were leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction, assessment, human resource and professional practice, student support and financial and asset management. There were several highlights. Oh, and I should say, we'll be giving a more comprehensive full report in, I believe, in October. But just to share some highlights, we were noted for our strong fiscal practices. Ms. Macedo and her team received glowing reviews for their practices. We were commended for adding teaching and learning staff. Obviously, Ms. Richards was on board prior and we just added Ms. Joyce as well and adding the diversity, equity, inclusion coordinator. So we were commended for that. We were commended for our efforts in starting to review our curriculum as well as purchasing high-quality instructional materials. I will talk about that when we talk about some areas for improvement as well because although we've begun that process, we were also, it was also noted that we do not have high-quality instructional materials across the board, which we knew and obviously, that's why we've begun the process. But that was something that was noted as well. The district, we were also commended for the district's commitment to the physical, intellectual and emotional safety of all of our students as well as the commitment to developing staff capacity to examine and dismantle implicit biases. As I did state, there were some areas of growth. I do want to note, many of these areas that were pointed out in the report also tied directly to our student success plan. So these were areas that we already knew that we needed to address. The first one being, you know, creating a stronger or really creating a strong multi-tiered system of support. We have elements of that in place, but certainly not a strong system. As I did already reference, we have begun to purchase and use high-quality instructional materials in some content areas. But again, it was noted that we need to ensure that we're doing that across all content areas and across all grade levels. We need to increase the use of assessment data to drive our instruction. And once we have that data, we really need to look at the instruction that we're providing. It was noted that we need to increase the level of rigor of our instruction in student work. And also to strengthen our educator evaluation system, both for teachers, staff and administration. And as I stated already, we'll provide additional information in October with a full report to the committee and to the community. And, you know, obviously, we'll be doing work with the staff around this as well over the coming school year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Powers?
Mr. Powers, when will that report be public?
It's public now. It is on the Department of Elementary and Secondary's education website. We can share it out, we just haven't because we wanted to obviously be able to follow it up with, you know, explanation. But it is public, it is. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will we be linking our report, our list, putting it on our website at some point too?
Yes, a hundred percent, yep. And we'll probably be sending it out as well to all of our stakeholders.
Anyone else? Next is the organizational chart.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. As you see here on the screen, it is an updated organizational chart for the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District. The, you know, purpose really of providing you this update is twofold. First, we have added additional staff over the years. So we wanted to make sure that we did have an updated organizational chart for the school system to review to, but also our community members. You can see, obviously, and I understand it may be, depending on your seat, it may be difficult to see. But it does start, obviously, with our superintendent, assistant superintendent, and then down to our directors and managers. Certainly, our coordinators and other central office staff and then our building principals. And then you can see from under there who, you know, reports into those individuals. You'll notice that, you know, main line is obviously linear, but certainly doesn't represent that all of those positions share the same responsibility or level of authority. But for presentation purposes, to try to get everybody in a row and then a column, this is how we're presenting it. One other thing, the other purpose really of sharing this is just to provide some clarity. Again, whether it's for our internal stakeholders, our staff, but our external stakeholders in terms of community and parents, we really want them to understand and make sure that they have an understanding of, you know, the process to go through when you have a question or concern, where you really should start, you know, what department you should start with, who should you reach out to. You know, so for example, I would say, you know, if you have a question, if you're registering your student for an activity and you have a question about the user fee, that would be directed to the business office, specifically starting with our district treasurer and then obviously working our way up to our director of business services and then obviously the superintendent's office for a follow-up if you're unable to get an answer. You know, if a parent or community member has a question for, you know, something that, maybe an assignment given in the classroom, you know, that really should be addressed or questioned at the classroom level, starting with the teacher and then working up to the assistant principal, the principal, one of our content coordinators, and then certainly the superintendent's office. And then also, you know, we talked earlier about transportation. You know, that first correspondence should really be directed to Ms. George and then working up from there, again, director of business services and then to the superintendent's office. So we, you know, again, twofold in terms of why we're providing this org chart. One, we want people to understand the positions that we currently have in the district, how they fall departmental-wise, but also so that everybody has a clear understanding and a picture of really the process to go through if you do have a question or concern or you need some type of outreach.
Mrs. Cameran, LaBrento? Mr. Powers, can you, because I've heard mixed things. Special education teachers, where do they fall? Because at one point, I had heard it went up through student services and another, here it looks like it's the principals. Where do they fall?
Sure, you know, obviously, some of our positions really kind of fall under multiple areas. You know, so for example, a special education teacher, to answer your question, yes, they would have some responsibility reporting into our special education administrators as well as our director of student services, but they are also considered to be a staff member of a particular building. So yes, they're a staff member of a department, but they are also a staff member of that building. So they really, you know, on a day-to-day basis, they, if I'm just, if it's the Williams, they would be reporting in on a day-to-day basis and immediate questions to Ms. Larkin and Mr. Clark and then certainly more program questions. They could certainly direct it to the building administration, but that would be then more of the special education administrators and director of student services.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you for this, Mr. Powers. It's very helpful. And if I can paraphrase and you tell me if I'm saying it wrong because I don't want to steal your words. It's very important for parents to really understand the closer anyone it is to a situation you have concerns about, that's the person you should probably start with talking about the situation. We don't run to the superintendent's office because something wrong happened in a classroom in a building. Start with the teacher and then go up the chain because you're more likely to get satisfaction that way and not feel like the superintendent's office, you've got 5,000-plus kids to worry about. So, you know, it's, you know, you can't know everyone. But certainly, I know the principal, I see Mr. Clark sitting right in front of me here and he knows pretty much every kid in the building. I know that for a fact, because both my sons went through the building. And he'll understand the situation and he'll be able to resolve it way better than blowing it up right to the superintendent's office. Is that correct?
Well-stated, Mr. Fitzgibbons, yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Powers. Next, we have the personnel report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. I am here to present to you the personnel report for the past month. So this report reflects since last meeting, any personnel actions that have taken place. We have had 52 personnel actions taken since our last meeting. We have had 22 new hires. We have had 11 resignations. That includes three teachers, six ESPs, one health proctor and one long-term sub. In many of those positions, in terms of our long-term sub or our teachers, they had other opportunities in other districts, either closer to home or in the case of our long-term sub, into a full-time teaching position in another district. And we did have three leaves of that, three leaves of absence. And then we had 16 other actions that included, you know, reassignments to new positions or change in status from either part-time to full-time or, you know, as such. But Madam Chair, you know, with your permission, and I'm not sure if this is your plan and I certainly may be jumping ahead on this, so I do apologize if I am. But, you know, we do have several new administrators and I'm not going to put them on the spot this evening because I did not tell them that I would be introducing them. But I was thinking, in talking to Ms. McDougall, potentially in October, we could invite our new administrators.
Stand our right ear, Mr. Powers, for October meeting.
Thank you. And that concludes my personnel report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powers, for the update.
Yes, Mr. Powers, sorry, just a question. Currently, how many open positions do we have? Do you know, just even teachers or, you know?
So I know right now, majority of our classroom positions are filled. I know we have a French teacher position open at the high school that Ms. Watson is looking to fill. I know we have a couple intervention positions open. When we had a few openings, I know one was at Merrill, one was at the high school. I believe one actually might have been at Rainham Middle School. Our interventionists actually applied for full-time permanent positions. So that left an opening there. So I really, in addition to, you know, the ESPs, I want to say the majority of our teaching positions that are open right now, other than the French, may be our intervention positions. But I can confirm that.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have a report from the budget subcommittee chair, Mr. Dolan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on September 19th, this past Monday, at 5:00 PM in the guidance suite at the high school. It was myself, Ms. King, Mr. Marera and yourself, Madam Chair. Also in attendance, we had Mr. Powers, Ms. Macedo, Ms. Robichaud and Ms. McDougall, our recording secretary. Just some highlights, track and field court update. Mr. Powers reported that the contractor and architect would schedule a meeting in the next couple of weeks and would have more information for us after that. The architect traverse is working on the schematic while the engineer conoco will be digging pit, test pits to test the soil and provide an update to us once that is complete. Weather permitting, the project is still on target for late spring completion. As a reminder, the proposed area for the tennis courts is behind the bleachers at the high school with all five tennis courts fitting into that space. The track is fairly straightforward as it will remain in the same location. We did discuss the Mitchell School. I will not read my report as Mr. Powers supplied that already. Discussion of staffing assistance for grade one. We did have a lengthy discussion about adding staff to the first-grade classrooms as many of our students, as I mentioned before, have not yet attended school. This is their first time here. As we know, enrollment in kindergarten is not, as I said, enrollment is not required under Massachusetts law into kindergarten. Ms. Macedo is concerned about the funding for the next fiscal cycle and cautioned that additional hires might not be sustainable going forward. We'll continue to discuss this matter and bring any proposals to this body if there are any. We did receive an FY22 payment amendment, E and D transfers. Ms. Macedo asked for consideration for two E and D, which is excess and deficiency transfers, to cover FY22 salary adjustment and a course reimbursement that should have been paid out in FY22, but we did not have them until after. out in FY22, but we did not have them until after FY22 was closed. So, Madam Chair, in the form of a motion to transfer an amount not to exceed $2,000 from the BRRSDE and D fund to cover a payroll salary adjustment from the FY22 budget.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. King. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, discussion, I forgot the discussion.
And it's really simple discussion, but we know all these terms, but the folks out there may not.
Yep.
E and D, Mr. Dolan, if you could just explain that, what it is.
Sure. Excess and deficiency, at the end of every fiscal year, we, if we have monies left on the bottom line, they go into our excess and deficiency account, where we can, we, the school committee, has to vote to take money out of that fund in order to cover any bills. Ms. Macedo, if I have any?
Yes, it's like free cash, and it has to be certified every year by November, so.
Thank you.
By the state.
Madam Chair, I just have one more, just some more clarity as we're on the E and D subject. Let's also revenues in for some of the facilities that we have in the district, that we get reimbursements from the communities that own the specific buildings other than the high school, correct? If something hasn't been reimbursed, if it's reimbursed after the close of the fiscal year, which is June 30th?
Right, yes.
Then those monies would roll into E and D.
Yes.
Even though that bill has technically been paid?
Correct.
We just haven't received reimbursement yet. If reimbursement is not in by the June 30th, then that rolls into E and D, correct?
That's correct, yes. Yep.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. King. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, eight in favor.
Also, Madam Chair, in the form of a motion to transfer an amount not to exceed $800 from the, again, E and D fund, what did I just say?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred? Sorry. $800 from the E and D fund to cover a course reimbursement for the FY22 budgets.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marera. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, eight in favor.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Robichaud also reported that she will be reporting at this meeting the overage in revenue for the FY22 budget cycle, so next on the agenda, she should get that. FY23 budget, reporting funding for interim staffing. I led a discussion on the potential need of possibly backfilling the assistant superintendent role, depending on how the committee voted this evening for the acting superintendent's position. Again, is out of the scope of the school committee to appoint an assistant superintendent, so it was determined that if Mr. Powers was selected as the acting superintendent, he would have the authority to fill the temporary vacancy that would occur by him taking the acting superintendent role. Again, as a reminder, this report was written on Monday evening, or a response to Monday evening's meeting. Status report on COVID grants, we received three grants under COVID. ESER grant one will expire on September 30th of 2022, and we received a total of $446,797. We have spent down that grant in its entirety on items such as summer school, IT upgrades, storage units, and other COVID-related expenses. ESER two, we have roughly spent $855,172 of the total award, I'm sorry, that was our total award. We have spent $779,299.16, with the remaining balance of $75,872.84. ESER two expenses, I'm sorry, expires on September 30th of 2023. ESER three, our final award, was for $1,972,683, and has been used for staffing and other COVID-related necessities. We have used $1,351,426.95, leaving us a balance in that grant of $621,256.5. That funding source will expire September 30th of 2024. Both ESER two and three are being used for staffing, and those who have been hired under the grants are one-year appointments, are yearly appointments, until the grant expires or the money is completely spent down. Next up, review of the title and job description for human resources. Mr. Powers distributed job title and salary for the newly created position. Mr. Powers indicated that he and Mr. Swenson have had several discussions regarding the elevation of the role to include a more comprehensive labor relations leader. The current manager's salary is $93,000. The proposed salary for the new position would be $120,000, a difference of $27,000. And Ms. Macedo indicated that we could handle that increase within the current FY23 budget. So, Madam Chair, in the form of a motion, I move to create the director of human resources position effective immediately.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marera. Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I don't know if this is you, Mr. Dolan, or if it's Ms. Macedo, but we couldn't, we couldn't increase staffing in grade one because we couldn't afford the sustainability, yet we can't afford this sustainability. How does that work?
So, that's actually pretty simple math. You hire one person that's more than $27,000.
Okay, so.
So, it's, to your, to ultimately, your point is, this is, doesn't touch.
This is just increasing a salary.
Correct.
And so, it's not actually adding staff.
Correct.
It's just.
Yes.
Adding more responsibility to staff, so that therefore they have to be compensated for that additional staff responsibility.
Responsibility, correct.
And so on and so forth.
Yep.
So, that, I just, because, you know, someone hears that you can't afford a first-grade teacher, but we can afford this, they get a little worried, but I knew where you were going, I just wanted to make it clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Marera.
Whether it's Mr. Dolan, or maybe Mr. Powers, from the current human resources manager position, what additional duties are going into the director position that were not being serviced previously? Just so those out in the public understand, what are they getting in regards to that increase of $27,000?
Sure. Absolutely. So, yes, obviously, we've had two, at least in my time at the district, we've had two human resources managers, and we feel as though this is an opportunity for us to elevate that position to director. It's consistent with our other central office positions, but we really are asking this person to be a strategic thinker, partner, and leader for the district. I mean, obviously, we've talked all about, tonight, about our improvement efforts that we, you know, need to undertake, and this person really would serve a leadership role, be a visionary for not just the human resources department, but also the district as well. Certainly, I think, you know, one of the things that we're always trying to stay ahead of and navigate, the ever-changing world of benefits, and so bringing somebody in with a strong benefits background that can, you know, right now, we kind of parcel that out to different departments, bringing somebody in that can really manage that. Obviously, labor laws, state and federal labor laws are very complicated and ever-changing as well, so we want to make sure that, you know, we can bring somebody in that has a strong background. And I think, you know, as you've heard, you know, as we grow in size, that's more employees, and so more employees to recruit, retain, provide professional growth and promotional opportunities, you know, for our students and our community. So, really, you know, as we, we feel as though this department, this position really needs to expand, to kind of expand with the district does.
That's my thought. Thank you.
Mrs. Holbrook?
Yes. So, is it my understanding, am I understanding correctly, there's currently no one in the position, we need to hire someone for the, well, it's retooling the position, and we would need to hire someone for that position, but the position, the manager exists, position, but there's no one in it?
Correct. There's a pending personnel action, retirement, that is on the horizon.
And just for my clarification to others, is, again, the need for the position, the director's position, because at this point, the district has approximately how many FTEs that were needing to, someone's need to oversee that kind of labor relations of the FTEs?
Altogether, we're approximately 600, between teaching staff, you know, custodial staff, maintenance staff, administration staff, and, and as the committee knows, we certainly added quite a few positions this past year, so that has just, you know, placed another level of responsibility on this department.
Yeah, and if I could, actually, as the negotiation chair, this individual will obviously participate in negotiations as well as did the managers, but to have the breadth and depth of knowledge that we're not looking for within this job description, I think will, will help us in that front as well.
And I think one of.
If I may, Ms.? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Will that help with legal bills as well, somehow positively offset any thing we were relying on from our attorney in negotiations, or we have a director who can help out, and we just run things by our attorney?
No, we would never negotiate without our attorney.
Okay, well, I was hoping.
Nice try.
I was hoping we could, you know, spin a story around that.
Sorry, no, 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 no. I think Mrs. Holbrook just got very excited by the possibility of that as an option, but sorry.
Yes.
One question, Mrs. Holbrook. So, just so I understand this correctly, the, essentially, we're just renaming the manager to be director and adding in responsibilities, is not going to still be a manager of human resources position available for someone to just fill?
Correct. And I think one of the other pieces also is the overseeing of the compliance with the federal and state laws, you know, including but not limited to Title IV, Title IX, ADA, and civil rights. I think that was something that was really important also, because that has been spread throughout. So, just having it in one place will be helpful.
And, Madam Chair, if I could, this motion is prior to us also voting on the job description, so it's the chicken before the egg, so we have to approve the position before we can approve the job description.
Correct.
That is my next motion.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Mr. Dolan to create the director of human resources position effective immediately, a second by Mr. Marera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and as I said, motion to approve the director of human resources job description as provided to the committee.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. Martelli. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, eight in favor.
And finally, Madam Chair, under other business, Mr. Powers indicated that many work orders, physical plant work orders are outstanding because of the personnel hours needed to assist with the opening of the Mitchell Elementary School. Mr. Kilgore requested a temporary utility worker as an extra pair of hands to address the outstanding work orders, and he will be bringing us a proposal at our next budget subcommittee meeting in October. And that, Madam Chair, concludes my very long report.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Next on our agenda, we have the quarterly report from business, our business office, Ms. Macedo and Ms. Robichaud.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee members and Acting Superintendent Powers. I'm here to report on the quarterly revenue receipts ending June 30, 2022. In looking at the anticipated funding sources, we are very conservative in utilizing the governor's budget figures. The state budget goes through a number of reiterations, but we have found that the governor's budget is usually the best version. This year, we experienced a pleasant surprise in that we received more funds than what was included in the governor's budget. This amounted to a surplus of approximately 1.5 million. This was mainly due to the increase in transportation aid. While the governor's budget uses information from two years prior to estimate reimbursements, the actual payout is based on the current information in the end-of-year report, which is the prior year. This will cause a variance from the number originally projected. Transportation reimbursement is subject to appropriation. Normally, we see a rate of reimbursement in the 63% to 72% range. In fiscal year 2022, we received approximately 85% reimbursement. So, the combination of increased expense estimates and the rate of reimbursement created the additional funding. We also received more funding for homeless transportation than we have in the past due to increase in costs. The other area with an increase was in Medicaid reimbursement. We had estimated $250,000, but received almost $500,000. Charter school receipts was higher than anticipated. There were only a few shortfalls, athletic fees and investment earnings. The additional funds received minus the shortages will close to E and D, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Robichaud. Does anyone from the committee have any questions?
Madam Chair, I have one. So, transportation, because I know a lot of people probably heard on TV that the transportation increase was significant, but the mileage that the state still uses has remained the same, though, correct? From point to door, from school to household door? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, because I know a lot of people are probably listening, saying, if we have all that extra money, why can't we pick up more kids? So, I just wanted to see if you could just explain again just what the state allot's and what the state legal amount is for mileage.
Right. Well, one of the reasons why, if we have extra money, we can't use it to pick up more kids, is because we're tied to a budget that was appropriated the prior year. So, regardless of the amount of funds that come in, we can't utilize them. So, we can't take that 1.5 and put on more buses, because that would be over our budget.
Now, could somebody add that? And I guess it all depends on if we keep on getting surpluses, which is probably not always going to happen, but those funds cannot be added to the next year and say, instead of putting the E and D, we'll put in transportation budget, line on it for the next year, and hope for the best the following year that we get a surplus again.
We would have to set up a special transportation stabilization type of account, which we haven't in the district.
If I may, Madam Chair, Ms. Marera.
To carry those funds.
One of the challenges with transportation is when districts or schools, towns decided to regionalize, it was under the premise that the state would give regional districts 100% of their eligible costs for transportation, and that number has never hit 100% since they passed that, that law, or enacted that law. They said, because part of the law was, as long as there was money available, and there's never been that 100% available. So, that number has fluctuated, in my time on the committee, from anywhere 60% all the way up to now 85%, but we've never hit that 100%. So, it's difficult for us to, to budget for that, when we just don't know the number from the state and what they're going to approve, and that's the, that's the challenge with transportation. And again, it's eligible riders. Anybody over one and a half miles is considered an eligible rider for reimbursement from the state.
The other thing also is that the additional money gets close to E and D, as Mrs. Robichaud stated, and what we tend to do every year is we help supplement the budget so that we don't have to go back to the towns to ask for more money to support our New Year's budget. We usually use our E and D, a good portion of it, to help supplement the budget. So, in, in a way, it does come back.
If I'm not mistaken, for right now, E and D is supporting the new track and tennis courts, correct?
Yes, it is.
And we took, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Macedo, was it 1.5 out for this year's operating budget, FY23? Was it one? FY '23, was it 1 million or...
1 million.
Was 1 million. So, we did take 1 million to offset the ask of the towns, took out of our E and D to offset that. And we do that every year as a financial practice to support the towns so we're not asking for as much as a million over.
Mrs. Holbrook? Yes. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I have some detailed questions, just because I do a lot of work or have historically in this arena. The increase in the Medicaid funding, is that because we had an increase in claiming around special education or just an increase in overall Medicaid students that are in the district? Because I know there's two pots of money that comes in around that. And I know UMass does the claiming and that piece for us around that, but do you know if it's because we had increased claiming around special ed or increased claiming, we had increased students with Medicaid?
I believe that there have been a lot of changes in Medicaid, number one.
There has been, yes, and more is coming.
It's very hard not to try to predict what's going to happen because, A, you have to look at, well, how many children do we have and what do they qualify for? And, you know, what are they going to reimburse this year and what aren't they going to reimburse? So, I think it's a combination of a number of those items where costs have gone up, students' numbers may have increased, and what maybe they're reimbursing us for is more than what they have.
I'm just curious if our, I know we've had more kids come in the district, if our kids are coming to the district, if they have, if they have, if there's been an increase in the number of kids that have Medicaid, because that would then mean an increase for us.
We don't have that information right here, but I could get that for you. Just like...
All right. Thank you.
I'm just curious, especially with, you know, the record of the surplus in the state budget, and we're hearing, piggingbacking off of Mr. Dolan's statement that we've never received 100% back and where the state's now giving back the money because of the 1985 law. Has any thought been given to either the administration reaching out or through, asking the school committee through the liaisons to reach out to our state delegation to kind of say, "Hey, if your guys are giving out the money, why aren't you reimbursing 100% or even further beyond the 85%"?
Yeah. Our members of MASBO, which is one of the organizations I'm involved with, Massachusetts Association for School Business Officials, that is something they go through the legislative process with every year. MARS also, Mass Association of Regional School Districts, also fight for those dollars as well. So, you know, we are involved.
As does the Mass Association of School Committees, we have a regional school district caucus that also advocates along with those two other organizations. So, they hear from us regularly.
I would just support Mr. DiMarino's. I think it's just an interesting thought right now as the state is giving $3 billion back to taxpayers because of the law and it's one-time money revenues this year, but it is just a very interesting thought around what that money could have been used for. Not that I don't want money back, but, you know, anyway, our schools also need it, right?
That's true. Okay. Yes, I'm up next.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm here to report on the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2022. This encompasses the months of April, May, and June, and at year-end, we had a surplus of a little over $90,000. We brought over into fiscal year '23 approximately 4 million in encumbrances, and this amount consisted of 1.4 million in purchase orders that were encumbered during FY '22 for various capital construction projects that hadn't been completed yet. And again, due to the shortages created by COVID, vendors experienced a lack not only of materials but also in personnel. So, we were trying to schedule jobs, but they didn't have enough staff and things would keep getting put off. So, that's why it went into the fiscal year '23 that we had to bring those funds over. We also purchased technology, approximately 650,000 for districts' one-to-one program as well as for replacement of obsolete or outdated hardware. In addition, we set aside funds for a technology stabilization account of approximately 250,000. Since technology is one of the four pillars in our strategic plan, we wanted to ensure that the ability to provide the needed materials and hardware in years to come would exist. In our Maintenance and Operations Department, we had approximately $600,000 encumbered, and these were for various supplies. We usually purchase custodial supplies early, and again, we're having some difficulties in getting things in and expense accounts. We also carried forward about $100,000 in salaries for secretaries and custodians because of the remaining days that are in June that weren't paid. Purchase orders for special education and the amount of approximately $300,000 for tutoring services that had not yet been paid, and those were also carried forward. And the remaining $700,000 are for a number of amounts which go throughout the budget in the areas of supplies, expenses, and contracted services. So, hopefully, this breakdown helps everyone to understand what made up that $4 million in carryover. So, before I go into '23, are there any questions so far about '22?
Just to add to Ms. Macedo, if I could, Ms. Macedo, we voted to carry that money over in June, correct?
June, yes, we did.
Thank you.
Line by line, we listed the line number and the amounts.
Madam Chair, Ms. Macedo, I don't claim to be a smart person, so I just want to ask, just so everybody understands, the difference between encumbrances and the monies that go into E and D, because it sounds like there's a lot of money that wasn't spent, and we just talked about money that wasn't spent that we just put into E and D. But I want people to understand the encumbrances are separate than E and D funds.
Encumbrances are anticipated expenditures. We had contracts out, say, for instance, a water boiler. The work hadn't been completed because of the COVID situation, and so we couldn't pay for anything until it's completed. So, we had to carry that encumbrance over, essentially kind of creating a new '22 budget that gets spent in '23.
Thank you.
Excess and deficiency is free cash. It's not committed to anything. It's free. Hopefully, that answered you.
If I could, Ms. Macedo, what's the amount we can have in our E and D account?
You're allowed up to 5% of your budget.
Thank you. Have we ever hit 5%?
No. No, no. Maybe 2, 2 and 1/2 tops, but we've never really hit that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Just to give you a little preview of what maybe my quarterly report will look like in December, I just wanted to let you know about fiscal year '23, since we've talked about a variety of positions. I do have you, you received, hopefully, the '23 budget, and just to kind of go over it, it's very early in the year. What we have done so far is we've encumbered our salary accounts for all those folks who are here so that we, when we encumber them, we know we're going to pay somebody a certain amount for the year, and we don't try to respend that money. So, it takes that right off the bottom line. We do have some vendor accounts, though, that have some deficit balances, and some of that, I think, is because folks weren't sure which account to use or picked the wrong account, and I'm going to be going through those within the next week or so. But overall, in a lot of those areas, there is sufficient money on the bottom line. So, when you add all the pluses and minuses, there's still money there. So, they're not totally in deficit as a group. And as you know, I didn't go through and do any of those transfers because, again, most of them were driven by encumbrances. And until an encumbrance becomes an actual expenditure, I didn't want to be transferring money unnecessarily until I see what that amount should be. And in October, the 3rd this year, we should be putting on a freeze in our budget, as we always do. So, any principals that are here or staff members, make sure you get your purchases in very, very soon because we're going to be closing that door. But again, should you have an emergency or really need something, we obviously will put that through for you. And the reason why we do the freeze is so that we can make sure we're going to make it through the winter. Snow removal is very costly, salt, overtime hours, all of that. It gets, you know, heating is going to probably be, you know, very high if we're having a really cold winter. So, we want to make sure we're going to get through that, those months, before we start spending and get ourselves into a situation that would mean that we'd have to find ways to recoup those funds by cutting something else. So, that's where we are so far this year. We're looking good. We have a good, healthy bottom line. We've got our encumbrances in, and we're moving along. And if you have any other questions, if not, this will conclude my report.
I do, Madam Chair, and it's not for you, Ms. Macedo. It's actually for Mr. Powers. As Ms. Macedo just indicated, in my time on School Committee, October 1st, the superintendent has always frozen the budget. As the Acting Superintendent, will you confirm that that will be your practice as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you both. And, Ms. Macedo, I want to thank you for your strong fiscal practices. Yay.
I got a gold star.
Next on our agenda, we have our community liaisons, Mrs. Conrad Laberinto.
I want, I would say, one of the things I've heard from a couple of parents with, I think Mr. Powers have already addressed, the Bridgewater Middle School facilities and the lockers, so that's already addressed. One thing, the other thing I did want to bring up, and I have heard from numerous parents, is concerns around special education, concerns around appropriateness of the multi-tiered support, which Mr. Powers talked a little bit in the DESI report, appropriateness of trained and certified teachers. So, it is an area people, our parents, are expressing concern, and I've heard from numerous at this point over the last four to five weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Much like Ms. Conrad Laberinto, a lot of what I've been getting is feedback from folks has been touched on this evening around Bridgewater Middle School, the work going on at the Mitchell School, the core checks of the workers who are actually there, as we talked about, et cetera. Again, the overriding concern that I've heard expressed this month during my office hour and just in people reaching out to me is making sure the school's open safely, that we have that as the primary concern of if I give you my child in the morning, you're going to give him or her back to me at night. And that's very important. And if we can, my suggestion is to keep communicating as much as we can about that to the interested communities. And you had touched on it, Madam Chair, I had a few people reach out to me about marijuana and a statement from the school committee around that. I don't know what your intention is around that, but I'd certainly be willing to volunteer to help draft a statement from the school committee in that regard, reiterating our policies and that, you know, we certainly don't want to see increases in any, of any fronts because it's not conducive to the health and safety of our students, staff, in fact.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Oh, Mr. Brooks, sorry, I forgot. And just a reminder, in October, we will be having the open office hours for, before School Committee. Correct? Yes.
Okay. And thank you both for your reports. Under New Business, we have an action item, and I will entertain a motion to table the payroll warrants dated August 25th, 2022, and September 28th, 2022, until our October meeting.
So, move to the second.
We have a motion from Mr. Dolan, second from Mr. Marrera. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight in favor. Okay. We are now at our public comment segment of our meeting, and the School Committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak, ensure compliance with open meeting law and other legal obligations, and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with the speaker or with one another in deliberation on comments as they are presented during comment periods. At its discretion, the committee may schedule issues raised by a speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. If you would like a personal response, please email the committee or Mr. Powers directly following the meeting. The Chair will now open public comment for a period of 12 minutes per policy BEDH and would ask anyone who wishes to speak to please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and respectfully ask you that you please limit your comments to three minutes. When your three minutes are up and you still have not finished, I will ask that you submit your thoughts or script to our recording secretary, Mrs. McDougal, and she will distribute it to the committee for our review. So, I will open public comment at...
8:50.
8:50. Anyone like to address the committee? I will close public comment at 8:50. And next on the agenda are announcements, and does anyone from the committee have any announcements? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
It's not so much in the form of an announcement, but just a reflection on Dr. Forbes, who, you know, we took a moment of silence for, and just the tremendous work she did for the district. I was privileged to serve as a town councilor while she was Superintendent of Schools, and I believe, I know Mr. Noble was there. I'm not sure if you were there, Mrs. Holbrook, when the Mitchell School collapsed.
Oh, I was there. Mrs. Holt!
No, I'm the School Committee.
No, I was a teacher at the time.
From Bridgewater. But just the work she did to get everybody taken care of and that school up and running, what was that, one day of school lost over the whole issue? It was unbelievable. But that just bespoke of her dedication to the district and how she always went above and beyond. So, it's a very sad loss, obviously, for her family and for our community, you know, that such a great leader has passed. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I have one announcement, I will say, is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council last night elected a new board, and I think they are putting together their calendar right now and working to engage with families and the school. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair. One thing I neglected to mention during my budget report is that we held a PTO Booster Foundation Leadership Meeting on last, this past Monday. It was well-attended. I think it was well-received by the leaders of those organizations. We will do it... We will do it again in the fall, I'm sorry, in the spring, and we are working on, through Mr. Powers and Central Office Team, the creation of a PTO calendar that the, those organizations can input their events and share that calendar with them, so they, nobody is planning a comedian one week after another, or, so there's better communication amongst themselves and really keeps us in the loop, as well as school.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Okay, and I'd also like to thank Mrs. King for sending our Welcome Back to School letter to the students, staff, parents, guardians, and community members on behalf of the school committee. And as Mr. Fitzgibbons has stated already, a community member has asked that the school committee consider writing a resolution, which would take a stance against the legal sale of marijuana in Bridgewater, or we can write a resolution that will prepare our students to understand and combat the pressures and misuse of recreational drugs of any kind. So Mr. Fitzgibbons has already volunteered to be one of the people to write a resolution, to present to the committee. If there is anyone else, you may speak to either Mr. Fitzgibbons after the meeting or by Friday, or email Mrs. McDougal, and it would be great if we had a representative from each town. So that is that. I do have two samples also that I will pass on to you, Mr. Fitzgibbons, of marijuana resolutions that were sent to me as a guideline, but again, they are only suggestions, and one is from Frazier Schools and one is from the Hingham School District. Also, we, TMLP, reached out to invite administrators and teachers from BR to their 125th birthday celebration. As part of the celebration, TMLP conducted a calendar contest in grade 4 classes in the towns of Rainham, Taunton, and Berkeley. And some Rainham students were chosen for the 2023 calendar and will be recognized at the Open House Live on WVBF on Saturday, October 1st, 2022. So stay tuned next month to find out who our winners were, or are. The school committee will be holding office hours, as Mrs. Conrad Laberinto stated, from 6:00 until 6:45 on October 19th, prior to our 7 o'clock regular scheduled school committee meeting in the cafeteria of the high school. And this concludes our regular school committee meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn our September 21st, 2022 school meeting at 8:55.
Second, jump the clock.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion?